Mr. Dyer, if you would call the roll, please.
Absolutely.
Here.
Mr. E. Daley.
Here.
Mr. Ferguson.
Here.
Mr. Harron.
Here.
Mr. Lewis.
Here.
Mr. Simmons.
Here.
Mr. Terry.
Here.
There are no amendments or additions to tonight's council meeting agenda. The agenda will stand as presented. Is there a motion to approve the council regular meeting minutes from September twenty-third, two thousand twenty-four?
Motion to approve council regular meeting minutes from September twenty-third.
Second.
Mr. E. Daley.
Steve.
Mr. Ferguson.
Yes.
Mr. Harron.
Yes.
Mr. Lewis.
Yes.
Mr. Simmons.
Yes.
Mr. Terry.
Yes.
Minutes are approved. And tonight, it is my pleasure to perform a swearing-in ceremony this evening. I'd like to actually give the floor briefly to Chief McKee to allow, we have a great audience here this evening, so I want to let you give some background on tonight's candidate.
Okay, hi again, I'm Chief Dale McKee with the Police Department. We started this process back in August of two thousand twenty-three to hire an officer. Today is kind of hard to hire a police officer, so we started finally just hiring people to send them to the police academy. And Officer Fritz, he, well, Cadet Fritz right now, he applied with us and we, you know, we did the interview process and everything else, and he was chosen out of the interview process to move on to the next step, which is it was to go to the police academy. And, uh, and we chose the Westerville Police Department, or Police Academy to send him to. And again, this is our first time that we've ever done this. Usually we hire people that's already got their police commission, their certificate, and they're ready to start. This is what a six-month process to go to the police academy. So we sent him in May, and it's just funny that we start paying a guy, and I don't even see from May to, you know, October when he graduates. He graduated last Friday from the police academy, and it was an honor to walk in there. And I think we were one out of sixteen or seventeen agencies had sent people through this police academy. And one of the instructors approached me and said, "Listen, I just want to let you guys know that you probably hired one of the best people, not just police officers, but the best people for this position." And it was a humble experience for him to tell me that after all these, you know, we're the smallest agency there, all these other bigger agencies and stuff. But he made a point to approach me to let me know that. And that, which, I already knew that, because Matt did an excellent job going through the hiring process. So with that, tonight, he becomes a full-fledged Plain City Police Officer after he's sworn in by the mayor. So that's, with that. And the good thing about Officer Fritz, or Cadet Fritz right now, is that he is from Plain City, he lives in Plain City, and his desire was to work in Plain City. He's also got a military background, uh, and just, and a good work ethic, so. With that.
And I accept that Chief McKee, I've got to sit in on the hiring process, and we have a great officer joining our ranks. So with that, if you would come forward, spend a few years, invite us to warrant him to be a police officer.
Twenty-twenty.
Twenty-twenty, as I saw Officer Newell and Officer Holmson were like, first couple of very exciting things.
There you go.
And, Eric, the afternoon. I am Matthew Fritz.
Hi, I'm Matthew Fritz.
I solemnly swear.
Sore and firm. Sore and firm.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution and laws.
The Constitution and laws.
Of the United States of America.
Of the United States of America.
The Constitution and laws.
Constitution and laws.
Of the state of Ohio.
Of the state of Ohio.
And the laws and ordinances.
And the laws and ordinances.
Of the Village of Plain City.
Of the Village of Plain City.
And to the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Will discharge the duties of police officer.
Will discharge the duties of police officer.
Congratulations.
With that now, I would like to introduce Ms. Fritz, Chelsea, to, and she's going to pin his badge onto him, so. And again, I'd just like to welcome to the Plain City Police Department family. All the other officers will be here tonight, because they're all qualifying for the firearm, anything for any firearm.
And we'll get council comment and follow on to, we'll take that.
Yeah, one, two. Only problem is, there is lots of retired.
Our next portion of meeting tonight, our visitor portion section, and we have several people signed in. So I will just go down the list, and everybody that has the opportunity to speak, you have three minutes. So the first person, it's constantly next. Do you, do you wish to speak, or you signed in?
Um, I signed in, I may speak if it's possible, if I can speak a little bit later. Or is it all in order?
Well, this is the visitor section, um, because after this part, it turns into, uh, council only gets two, possibly three opportunities a month to have public meetings or to be able to speak together in our public meeting format. So that's why we have the visitor section, so if you would like to speak now.
That's okay.
Oh, okay, okay. Julie Holden? Hi, I'm sorry, yeah, would you like to speak? Okay, yes, yes, definitely. Cody?
Just, just for purposes, you just say your name, and we do ask. Just.
I'm Julie Hidinger, I live on Main Street, West Main Street, three forty-nine. Um, I just wanted to talk for a couple of minutes about, um, I've read some of the problems that, that Plain City's had regarding the stormwater. And there's a couple of other problems that I've identified by living on Main Street. And one is like the, um, truck traffic, um, the hazards of that, um, the high weights. And then, um, the other problem that I see is the Darby River as a pedestrian. Darby River Bridge, um, is really unsafe for pedestrians and bicycle. I mean, those trucks come blasting across, they're throwing concrete chunks. And so I have a possible solution that I'd like to suggest, um, that could affect those things directly and indirectly. In the Ohio Revised Code, Section fifty-five thirty-one, um, point one four, that's title fifty-five roads, highways, and bridges. It's supported by the federal, um, government as well. You could establish a covered bridge with a toll, um, which monies would go towards that bridge that has pedestrian access. And it would, just by the act of being a toll, divert a lot of that truck traffic, um, down thirty-three. And so that's just my suggestion.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next visitor, Lisa Ackerman.
Hi, I'm Lisa Ackerman, I live at three thirteen Renate Court. The reason why I'm here tonight is I want to talk a little bit about, uh, we own a golf cart, and we live in the Darby Fields community. And, uh, this week we were informed that, you know, due to the speed limit and where the school is and things, that, you know, we were no longer being allowed to turn out because the city ordinance is twenty-five. Which is okay, you know, I just, I think I want to at least explain, like, we own a golf cart, we did so because it's fun for our family. Like, we do so many family things with this. We go to parks, we go to softball events, I mean, I take my eight-year-old everywhere. We hold local businesses, it's how, it's how we spend our summers, right? Um, which I love. I also though, like, after talking to, um, author, Officer, um, when he called, you know, he, he explained, like, some of the things. And I, I understood when he said, you know, that why our state ordinance was twenty-five. Totally understand that, I can respect that, because I want one to be on forty-two, I also don't want to be on Main Street, so I can respect it. But then, you know, the more that we thought about it, when we looked at where the speed limit is in relation to the school, when you come out of the school, you get to go twenty-five until you get to our community, right? But when you come into the school, you don't have to slow down till twenty-five until you're past the school entrance. It's not even at the school, it's past the school entrance. So we just went to, you know, talk and say, hey, we would love for you guys to consider moving that school sign back, where the speed limit is not twenty-five at the school, but make it consistent with where our community is, and get it back to where, you know, our entrance is, because we have a lot of kids that walk every morning, you know? And now that there's busing, you know, a lot of kids went to busing, but my kid is someone who walks every day to school. And, you know, I, I'm nervous every day that she's out by that road, because people do go really fast, even though it's a school zone, it's just really unsafe. So we would like you to consider at least moving that back and get it more consistent with the rest of the neighborhood. Thanks.
Danny Albertin?
At one twenty-four Blue St., uh, same situation. I don't have a child that is going to school or anything at this point, but just the inconsistency of the thirty-five coming out of the school, uh, except when we go northbound, it is twenty-five, it's thirty-five until you actually get in front of the school. So I'm just looking to see if we can move that back as well, just for the safety of everybody, and also so we can turn left out of the neighborhood to go into town, to be able to do the fun activities, um, and just have a safer environment in general. Because there are a lot of people who are not going, whether it's thirty-five or twenty-five, just not going the correct speed limit right there, so close to the school. It is kind of a blind spot for anybody turning left, whether you're on a golf cart or on a car. So the fact of having that be twenty-five before you get to the school allows traffic to be able to get to the speed that you should actually be before you get to school, rather than start to slow down in front of the school. So that is, uh, that's what I'm looking to get out of that. Thank you.
Thank you. And John Boyer.
That might be a little redundant, uh, with some of my other neighbors have said. My name is Jonathan Boyer, I reside at two eleven Fan Show Drive in the Darby Fields subdivision. Uh, thank you for your time to, this evening. Enjoyed living here in Plain City, so, and have met so many wonderful people. The relationship that, uh, that residents have with this community, with the community leaders throughout the city is unwavering. I'm proud to call PC home. Weekend trips to the pool, Saturday morning daughter-doughnut dates to Dear Dutchman, picking up that newly released library book, waving at neighbors on the way to Pony Field, those are just a handful of things that me and my family enjoy while using our golf cart. We understand we're very fortunate to have a golf cart, but we don't take it for granted. More importantly, we understand that safety is the highest priority for the community, for these carts, and for each of us to be responsible while driving them. We are here to request and to consider amending the speed limit northbound from Darby Fields Boulevard to the entrance of Plain City Elementary from thirty-five mile per hour to twenty-five mile per hour. This would alleviate a left turn out of Darby Fields for all vehicles, but also strength, strengthen pedestrian safety around these entrance exits to our neighborhood. A few things why I feel that this should be considered. Southbound on the same stretch of roadway is twenty-five mile per hour and does not change till thirty-five mile per hour until Darby Fields Boulevard. No turning left, uh, lane for Darby Fields entrance going northbound, so essentially this would be helpful in slowing down drivers. The stretch of Plain City Georgesville Road is used by groups of cyclists daily coming in and going out from the Heritage Trail. And most importantly, the children and parents that use Darby Fields walking path to get to school, which runs parallel to the road. With our community being adjacent to the elementary school, we hope that an agreement can be made and appreciate the consideration. We feel this recommendation would provide a safe, consistent, and reasonable speed to protect our drivers, children, and bicycles. Thank you for, uh, this discussion, I sincerely appreciate your time.
Thank you for your time. Is that everybody that wants to speak, I just want to make sure and give the opportunity. Thank you very much. Moving into our report section, um, we wrapped up Battle of the Cans, and the Plain City and Jonathan Alder community was very successful. We raised over ten thousand food, non-perishable food items for the Plain City community that will go back to our school district's backpack food program, which is wonderful. We did beat London in that aspect. Yes, I still need to bring out the shirt, because our football team was not successful at making even a touchdown, so. So that, that will be coming, but for the evening, I did not want to, uh, soil the evening of swearing-in Officer Fritz with London in the room, so. Coming up this Friday night, we have the Plain City Public Library's Haunted Library, and if you've never been to it, it's a great time, great time to see people in the community. It's eight to nine thirty P M. But from seven to nine, you can come to Pumpkins on Main, and that is a new event, um, connected to the Haunted Library, but to kind of increase foot traffic to our uptown businesses. The Village is sponsoring a pumpkin carving contest, I want to thank Mr. Stanford for helping to get that information out there. You can drop off your carved pumpkin to the Nisville Building here by Thursday and Friday, they will be uptown, and hopefully having a wonderful, pumpkin glow on Main Street and checking out the businesses. Been working on our Veterans Day Ceremony that is coming up Monday, November eleventh. It will be again at Jonathan Alder High School, um, starting around ten A M. If you're a veteran, you can come and enjoy refreshments, um, at nine fifteen in the morning. And so that will be a wonderful ceremony to celebrate and honor our veterans. With that, our village administrator and Renee, and finance director, do you have an update?
I have to apologize, where I'm scared back on vacation today, so I'm just digging out through emails to all the villages, I will have the new reading card.
That's okay, thank you. And Chief McKee? And Chief McKee?
Oh.
It wasn't teaching.
Anyhow, myself and Lieutenant Joshua, as I said, attended the ceremony or the graduation ceremony for Officer Fritz. I was very impressed with the ceremony from the Westerville Police Academy, and also the training that he received was phenomenal, I mean, and. Anyhow, I just look forward to sending future cadets there if necessary. Again, Officer Fritz, he actually starts tomorrow, he's probably got another three or four months of training, just in-house. He won't be actually on the road by himself until probably sometime next year, after the first of next year. His training officer will be Officer Flowers, who, as you well know, has been here almost twenty years. And again, so I, congratulations to him, it's been a long process. And then lastly, or a couple things more. Uh, Officer, all the police officers tonight are actually at firearms qualifications, and we also have firearms qualification for the rest of our fight tomorrow. And then lastly, just a reminder, the Fall Festival is a Saturday at the park. Can't believe the mayor didn't beat me to that, but yes.
I, I did.
Oh, did you?
I said that after company, no I did not, it was written down, but I skipped right over it, so.
Who was talking to?
I'm slacking.
Now, just a reminder, the Fall Festival is this weekend, it looks like it's probably going to be ready for a month. We're expecting a lot of people, we did some planning last week, so we're ready.
Thank you for covering the item that I just skipped right on over to November, so. Thank, thank you, Chief McKee. With that, I will, um, we're moving into our discussion item, so I will turn it over to Ms. Granger to go over the Aquatics Center feasibility study preliminaries of results.
Yeah, so, um, just to those of you who aren't familiar, um, we embarked on an aquatics feasibility study, basically looking at the current conditions of our aquatic center, our attendance, and playing for the future with the growth that we have in the divisions and us around the areas. So knowing that we had all of this going on with the Cleveland Army facility, the pool started operations in two thousand twelve, we did hire agency to embark on an aquatics feasibility study, which basically looks at the pool, um, okay, oh, sorry about that. Um, that basically looks at the aquatic center and the community holistically, and to that end, we have had a couple of community engagement, I'm out on this. Couple of community engagement meetings where we invited the public to come in and give input on the facility, what they liked about it, what they didn't like, what they saw that we might need for improvements. And again, taking all of that holistically, um, the consultants have, have really done a fantastic job, taking all the community input, all their wishes, their desires of the community, um, and then wrapping it up into basically a, a, a proposed plan for the possibility of expansion of the aquatic center. So without, without getting too much into the weeds, I'll let them, uh, take over and explain a little bit about how the process went and moving forward, um, what they're seeing, so.
Thank you. My name's Keith Hall with M S A Design, M S A Sport, that's a division of M S A Design, it's our sport division. Katie Freeland is with me here. We have both been working on this, our office has been working on it with Linda and her group. To build on some of that discussion, some of the premise and how we get started on these things is really to do an assessment on the existing facility. It is twenty years old, or, you know, actually a little older than twenty years old, so that's, that's pretty common. When these pool facilities reach about twenty years old, they start to show their age a little bit, start to get into the equipment and things of that nature, and it's, you have to start planning for replacement. Not immediately, you just have to start monitoring it a little closer at that time. And then it's not uncommon to know that when these facilities are built and they're twenty, you know, if they were twenty years ago, well, a lot has changed in communities. A lot has changed in what is desired out of an aquatics, uh, center. So what we infuse into the process is a process really of, you know, of collecting data from the community, and what they think about the pool. And the reason we do that is because these facilities are pretty much the hub of social activity in our communities for three to four months sometimes out of here. So it's important that they support the community, and the community wants to be part of it going forward. So what I've done tonight is, um, tomorrow night, we're actually having our community engagement meeting number three, uh, which we're going to start to present some of the plans that you all have in front of them. But I've, I've backed up, since this is the first time, I know Linda's been giving updates, but since this is the first time we've been in front of you, um, and I'm going to run you through a quick summary of the process that we've gone through. We have, we have watered this down, so if you have questions along the way, feel free to interrupt me and raise your hand or just ask me or whatever, I'll pause. But I'm going to run through it, I'm going to talk about what we did in community engagement meeting number one, and the information, the data we received there, as well as, uh, the second one, and then what we're going to be, uh, working with the community on tomorrow night, and then wrapping up the study at that point in time. So this is just a slide, the demonstration team, I already, um, mentioned Katie here, she's been a big part of the process. There's a couple other folks in our office, Trent and Tyler, who've helped out quite a bit. And then we've also engaged with, um, Water Technology Incorporated. We do, we, whenever we do an aquatics facility, we usually, um, engage with W T I. They are nationally known, they work around the world, they bring this international, I will say, and even a significant national experience to the process to help us understand and, uh, bring the expertise, um, more or less technically, but a little bit of design, uh, expertise too. As I mentioned, and I just have this listed as in the agenda, because this is, has been our running agenda, I'm going to go through, um, a summary, community engagement number one, and then a summary, community engagement meeting number two, and then we're going to talk a little bit about what we're going to do for community engagement number three. Community engagement meeting number one. Basically, when we go through this process with folks, we like to present the, the area of which, and it was important on this one to do this, of which this pool is meant to serve. Who's it meant to serve? Well, it's meant to serve the community that is paying for it, right? The, the taxpayers, the constituents. Um, and this is just to remind everybody, this is the, the outline of the, of the primary service area. Even though there is outreach outside of here, you have residents, they have a fee that they pay, and you also have non-residents that have a fee that they pay. But everything within the yellow line, those are the folks that's paying the mileage and so forth to pay for the construction of the facility and the continued operation of it. How you recoup that, that's a whole nother, um, discussion. The existing pool, the existing pool is a, it's a single body of water, um, that has a twenty-five meter, um, lap pool, and then it has zero entry on the one side, and then a slide, and then a splash pad. There are, as, as we get into this, there, there are issues related to this pool. It's a single body of water, so when there's an accident that happens in the pool, they have to shut down the pool basically for the rest of the day and let all the water cycle through a filtration system and so forth. And, um, at that point in time, all you have left is the, uh, is the, is a splash pad. So that's, that's kind of an operational issue that you have to deal with over time. There is really limited parking on site, is one of the things we found out too. But I'm going to run through some of the existing conditions here. In general, they've done a pretty good job maintaining this facility. You walk on site, you don't have to, you know, until you start really peeling back the layers and start digging, you don't really see a whole lot wrong with it, but then you start to really look at it and everything, and there are things, there's some, you know, some, the, the vessel itself, it's a stainless steel vessel, that is in pretty good shape, uh, but some of the features are really starting to show their age, and they're breaking down, and they're essentially using, go out a little far here, but they're basically using duct tape to hold a few things together and keep them, and keep them operational for the community. But they're doing a really good job, um, is what we found out. There is some, with the green space that's adjacent to it, there's some drainage issues on the one side, um, getting onto the deck and some ponding with some water. That's something we probably want to address as we get into this. The buildings, frankly, are in, they are, they are actually in really good shape. There's some things that, um, I, I still struggle, it's little things, from an architectural perspective, but they don't have gutters on the building, with downspouts. I, I, yeah, that's, that's, I, I don't know what that's about, I can't even comment on it. Other than to think that a builder may have cut a corner at some point in time or whatever, but, the main entrance going into the building, that wide open area where it's not connected, uh, we usually like to see that covered. So we don't know if, at the time, that may have been value engineered, not uncommon. But it's usually a, a place that, it's a, usually that area is used as a shelter in place for, like, light storms, the light rain, for people to go to versus the locker rooms and so forth. But the locker rooms are clean, the concession stand is clean, their offices are all clean and well-maintained. So I, you know, I would commend the team and the community on, you do have a pretty nice facility here. But there's just some functional issues related to it, we'll get, I'm going to get into that here in a little bit later, so just going to flip through some of these real quick. I will say, um, the bath, the, the mechanical, um, the, the pool equipment building is really, it's, it's really undersized for what it is. The, uh, the pool heater is actually sitting on the outside of the building, which is not something that, I don't think we've ever done that. That's kind of a unique thing to me, I don't, I, I'm not questioning that you can't do it, but, uh, when you put equipment outside, that means it's just, it's exposed to the elements, and it's going to take the light expectancy down on it. And you can see down in the lower picture, middle picture, they've had to, uh, put some, um, engineer the little sheds out there to sort chemicals in and everything that they've changed to over the years, so. There is some pretty, even though I spoke highly of the. So, there is some pretty, even though I spoke highly of the locker room and admin buildings, there's some deficiencies in this building that I think do ultimately need to be addressed. We went through, with the community, you have to sort of bring them into this a little bit. So, what we tend to do is talk about trends and considerations that we see today. The pool on the left shows a zero entry that is connected to a lap pool that is connected to a dive well. That's all one single body of water versus the pool on the right, which, the pool on the left is Kenwood Country Club down in Cincinnati. The pool on the right is Grandview Heights, and you can see the separate bodies of water that we have in there. It does have zero entry with a ladder, there's a top pool in the lower half of that picture. As you get up, there's eight lanes, a lap that are connected to a dive well. So, you know, basically, programmically, more or less the same features. If Kenwood has an issue in their pool, they got to shut the pool down and send everybody away, and then they can come back probably the next day. At Grandview Heights, if something, if an accident happens in there, they always have another body of water to go to, because it's on its own separate filtering system. So, they don't have to kick everybody out necessarily. So, just something, you know, multi-sectional is something that we talk a lot about. Zero entry is a big thing. It's, it was kind of a newer and big thing, I guess, back in the early, you know, 2010s in that area, when this pool was actually built and everything. And it was originally seen as a means and a way to address maybe not doing a top pool. But now what we're seeing is that, you know, the community still wants their top pools, but they also like the zero entry. The zero entry allows for that multi-generational experience. So, if you go to where it's just like sand on a beach right at the edge, that's where the little kids can kind of hang out, and the parents can see them there. If they have multiple children, then they can see their, you know, you can see the one kid in the very little bit of water, all the way down to 18 inches, and maybe the teenager is hanging out down in the three foot, six inch water. So, you know, it's zero entry, but it's also that leisure water experience is becoming a bigger and bigger amenity that communities are asking for. It's no longer just a lap pool with a diving board. Which, next slide, lap lanes are still a very, that's still a very big piece of this, but you can't just have this anymore. I think probably most of us grew up in an era where community pools were just a rectangular pool, maybe with lap lanes, maybe not, but that's how they used to be designed in there. Their usefulness only goes to a certain point. Dive wells are very, still very popular, even to the point of, we're seeing the three-meter board, the high board is, maybe some of you might refer to it, coming back into the picture. We're also seeing just the, a platform, that's the picture on the right side there, where there's no board, you just walk up and you dive off a little bit of an extension into the water, so there's no bounce, and there's no freeze in place or trip or whatever as they start to come off the board. It's a little bit of a safer experience, and there's actually, you can see that picture and the real steps that go up to it. So, that's pretty popular, too. Slides are always popular. You can do little slides, big slides, however you want to do slides with, you know, it's, that is really more so a function of cost, the bigger the slide, the more water, more water, more money, that sort of thing. Lazy River, this is an amenity that comes and goes. They're really high on the maintenance side, require many lifeguards, they're hard to manage and, you know, manage and maintain, but I would suggest for a community, probably not the best thing, but for a water park, that's, it's a little bit of the like Zimby's in Bay, you know, they have to have things like this, and it makes a lot of sense. As I mentioned, play for all ages, like to refer to that as multi-generational. So, a lot of the, you know, the nets walking across, the climbing board that, you know, you can climb up, the buckets that spill water, I think we've all seen that, you know, geysers and splashing and everything. And that's also, I'll kind of rewind back to the, to the zero entry. At the edge of the zero entry, instead of doing a splash pad, we can have geysers and water things that shoot up right at the edge of that, too. So, you get the advantage of both a splash pad as well as a zero entry right there in one location. Water depth is something that we spend a lot of time when we, you know, go through our, when we do design pools and or modifications to existing pools, water depth is a big thing. And you can see that three foot, six inch line, which is the lower line that goes across there, that's usually, in a leisure pool, that's the water depth that you really want to have a lot of, because for adults, that allows us to stand and have water come up to about here. And then for children, if you have zero entry coming into it, then they can kind of gradually come into that depth. And so, it allows for a lot of different recreation activities, too, to come along with it. As you get in the water that's higher, you know, that can be more for aerobics and water, other specific water activities, but for leisure water, three foot, six inches, 42 inches is what we wanted to see. Shading, this is, this continues to grow. I think in some case, you know, maybe someday we'll see a big structure over, up the entire pool, but shade is a big thing. It's no longer, you can't just have the umbrellas necessarily, you know, people are looking for larger shade structure, structures, you know, just to hang out underneath and dine, you know, dine underneath the concessions and so forth. So, definitely not something to be ignored, and even to the point of when we do a top pool, we're starting to, you know, stretch shade structures over the top pool entirely. So, something that we want to think about as we start looking at future modifications. Then the bath house, there's higher expectations now than come from the bath houses. From an ownership perspective, you want them to be low maintenance and durable, but then from a user perspective, they want to be accessible and have, you know, basically independent and a quality usability built into them. So, a lot of, you know, the concessions and so forth that are attached to it, these are highly functional buildings that need to be designed in the right way. And then the environment itself, you know, it used to be a rectangular pool with a pool deck around it, you might have grass space, you know, folks like a more of a resort feel of these, and that can be anything from, you know, a lot of lounge chairs, green grass space, the shade structures, everything plays into that, that hierarchy of creating that environment where people want to engage and socialize and be part of. And then act community engagement number one, I can't see this from this far away, but some of the things that we, you know, really kind of creeped up. So, at the first community engagement meeting, what we do is we show them all these images, we talk about the existing facility and what we saw, and then we turn to them and say, what do you think? We don't try to guide the conversation. So, things we heard was not enough pool deck, not enough leisure water, parking came up as a prominent issue, shade came up as a prominent issue. So, those things that we would expect to hear, as well as people outside the community using our pool and maybe crowding it up, and some operational stuff that really isn't part of this exercise, but good for the operational folks to hear upon their end. And then we get to community engagement number two. So, the premise for this is what we do is we take all that information that we heard in the first engagement meeting, we talk to staff, and then we start to explore options to address those issues. So, where, you know, we heard not enough leisure water, so that starts to trigger, well, how do we expand leisure water? Not enough parking, how do we expand parking? Not enough shade structures, what's that look like? So, there's a couple of things that we do. One is, we sort of create a bunch of plans, but we, I think we created five or six options with this one, and we get them to react to it, as well as, we do a community survey. So, we did a Survey Monkey as part of this phase of work, too. So, I'm going to go through what we, the information we collected through this part of the exercise. The proposed concept plans that we really focused on, as I said, leisure water, the eight lane competition pool, right now you have six lanes, eight is where it really becomes useful. Additional zero entry, you have zero entry. It's a present, that is. You have, you have zero entry, but you don't have a lot of it. And if you remember, it has the, like a knee wall that kind of cuts through it. I think the prior design, there was a designer, he got a little, thought a little too much and tried to shake this thing, the more, Linda mentioned it to me when we first got involved with it, and I think it was designed to look like a fish, and I was like, why would anybody do that? Well, it looks like a fish. I'm all in on it. So, you know, and there were some things that they did, you know, they had the, if you all remember, there's a bulkhead, what I would call a bulkhead, that comes out in the middle of the pool that sort of divides the zero entry, and then there's leisure water on the other side of that. They had to do that to make those lap lanes useful, so they could do flip turns on it. And that really created an awkward moment in that pool. It kind of, it kind of created a separate area for leisure water, because as you get outside the first ledge, those guys were the dive well. So, there's, it's probably worked fine for a long time, but when you increase the population in the pool, it starts to create issues. So, added length to the zero entry is something that we really focused on. One of the things we threw in there was a multipurpose community room. One of the things that we found has been successful as a revenue generator is to have a room to run heated parties out of and things like that with the swim features and so forth. New play features is pretty much a given. Expanding the pool deck and even the green space was something, was one of our guiding principles. And then as we add square footage of water, that's going to require us to expand on the buildings themselves. So, whereas, I already said, the pool equipment or the existing one building was too small, that's going to have to be expanded, and then as we increase occupancy, then we have to put more restroom fixtures in it and things of that nature, so we would have to expand on to the locker rooms. So, I'm going to run through these pretty quick, because they're all, these are just the options that we shared with the community to get them thinking about design. Again, this is the existing layout, you can see the, as I mentioned, the fish-looking pool shape to that, and then the splash pad. So, this is what we, we knew we had to work with, and then if you look at the, what we did is we identified the area at the top of the plan as our potential area to expand into. We knew we didn't want to touch the recently renovated, I think they're basketball and pickleball courts. So, we knew we couldn't touch that, but we knew we could wrap around the backside of the existing ball field there. Again, just the existing pool, just to remind everybody where that is. And then the first option we looked at was, in a lot of these options, you heard me mention earlier that the existing pool shell was in, was in good shape, right? So, when you get into these types of things, you have the ability to modify that existing pool if you want to. So, you can like, cut off end of it, build, that's the beauty of a stainless steel wall, build another wall, raise the floor, and reuse and patch, just like you would come in, maybe do a renovation to an interior space or something. So, in this case, we would leave the lap lanes in, expand on them, get rid of the curve, build a, basically build a new wall on the right side and the south side, south plan side there, and then build a whole new leisure pool up on the top of the plan, and then put the splash pad or a top pool back by where the existing mechanical building is, and then wrap parking around the top of the plan. You can kind of start to see in this close-up view how that starts to lay out. So, this was just option A, as we looked at it. And then option B, expanding, you know, a pretty decent field of parking up by the courts, little field of parking back by the volleyball, same volleyball as we get in, zoom in on this. This started to have, you know, from our perspective, a lot of traction, because we're basically leaving the existing pool as it is, taking out the bulkhead, extending the zero entry over to where the water slide is, and then raising, filling in all that depth. So, it's three, we added three foot, six inch depth all the way across the pool, and then take and build a whole new lap pool with a dive well, just to the north of that, with the top pool adjacent to it. And then option C, again, just expanding on the parking a little bit. This one turns out a little strange, but we were maintaining the existing zero entry, and then modifying where the lap lanes were, and building a whole new lap pool that would have a deep end with a diving, diving boards on it. And then this one, essentially, and I'm going to expand the parking to the max, as you can see, and then this just takes the existing pool out, and does a whole new pool. So, a whole new lap pool with dive well, another pool, rectangular pool, leisure pool with zero entry, and the slides, you can kind of fall to the south side. I, you know, this is, again, it's an option, it's not one we necessarily recommend, because there's a lot of value in what you already have there. Under this scenario, you're essentially going in, with the exception of the bath house, your D-mark line as soon as you walk through that bath house forward is being demolished, and you are completely rebuilding what's there. So, then as we got through this, talked to the community about it, if you remember, I paused on option B and said that that handled, you know, that started to have a lot of traction to it for us, as well as the community. The community leaned in on option B, and that was actually their most preferred. They didn't like C and D. D was the one that had the, that's the whole new pool. C was the one that was a little funky in terms of trying to reuse the existing one. But everything came back to basically option B. And even as we started getting into this, one of the exercises that we ended up with here was, we had boards, and we gave them sticky dots, so then they'd come up and kind of put them on what their most liked features were, what their most liked plan was, as well as, what was their most disliked plan. So, in summary, you know, again, option A was where we refurbished the existing pool into just a lap pool, and then a whole new leisure pool. This one, we didn't get a lot of comments on. Usually what we look to is on the right side, I think it says zero, or zero, zero people really preferred that one, and then you actually had two people that disliked it. But then as you get into, like, again, on option B, I hate to keep going to option B, but you can kind of see, we had nobody that disliked it, and then a lot of preferences for this plan, and you just kind of just look at the comments on it, it was really well received as we went through it. And I'm going to zip through these here a little bit, you know, see, you can see, see those four dislikes, and for the group that we had, that's a pretty big thing, to have them put dislikes on a specific plan. And then again, four dislikes on the whole brand-new facility itself. And then we did an online survey. I would say that, you know, we do these surveys quite often, and you had really good participation on your survey. You had 250 or 350, is that eight?
Eight.
Yeah. I feel like I'm in a eye doctor right now. And, and that's really good, you know, considering the size of your community and considering the number of people that would actually participate in something like this. You can see the number of residents versus non-residents, so it was resident-heavy, 268. You know, you see the pass orders, family, I'm not going to go through each one of these, but you had a really good response, and so we felt really good about the information we were getting. And we just, in this diagram, just tried to summarize what we, you know, really is what the preferences were. Some of the scoring gets to be pretty close, so everything in the green that you see above, those got the highest scores, so like, you know, people were wanting more shade structures, more lounge seating and deck space, along with the water slides. Those are pretty important features that they, they really drilled out on and said was important. And the second to that was everything in the purple. And then as you get to what's the least important, it doesn't mean that they don't want it, but it's just the least important is the, you know, the three-meter diving board, that's the high board, oddly enough, Wi-Fi, and then the 50-yard lap pool, and then I think a, on that last one, unisex restrooms, I think we worded that wrong in the, in the survey, that should have been family restrooms, and then I think that would probably creep up above the line, too. So, you know, so we had good response here. Nothing there really surprises us, that's the trends, that's what we're used to seeing. Additional programming, you know, they talked about a heated pool, it's already heated, so I don't know where that came from, but, you know, additional furniture, all this is really tied together. You know, I think what I would tell you to focus on is expansion results. There was a lot of support for a levy to help pay for some of this, there was a lot of support that they would come here more. So, that starts to tell us whether they really would or not, that there is a lot of support running for expansive, expanding your community pool. And then what we're going to do tomorrow night is, we're going to run through this with the community. As we go through each one of these meetings, it seems like different people start to show up, which is great. up, which is great, we actually like that. And present this final plan, and hopefully come out with a lot of support to it. What we, as I went through those other plans, we found that the, expanding the parking up to the, on the north side probably made the most sense, with doing a little bit of parking in the back, and making sure we had a nice drive, as well as pedestrian access, which means sidewalks. You know, wrapping this whole roadway, so families and all that aren't walking in the middle of the roadway as cars are going through there, because we still need to maintain, we would leave the mechanical, the pool equipment building where it is, expand on it, but we would still need to maintain that access to drop off chemicals and, and actually do maintenance on the facility itself. So, felt like that, and the, the parking on the north side of the plan can then service both the, the basketball courts, as well as the ball fields, which is non-existent right now, it's just a grass area, and I think people are actually parking in the pool a lot. Y'all may be looking at and saying, what about that green space that's on the, I guess that would be the east side of the existing parking lot? That is a detention, stormwater detention area, so we really can't get into that. And then with the width of it, the way it is, even if we took that stormwater and put it in an underground system, I'm not sure the, the value of that would, would actually express itself. So, we're not recommending, we're just, you know, to do anything with it, we're saying we bet it is. And then as you get into this, this is the option B, but modified. So really using your existing shell that you have out there, as I noted, you know, pulling up the depth where we have the dive wells and zero entry, expanding that, and, you know, leveling it out even a little bit, so you don't go down as fast as you are currently. A whole new lap pool with a dive well, you can see the shade structures that's surrounding this, bringing some of that green space in to be surrounded by the deck. We've had conversations, does that be, does it stay grass, or does it become turf? That's not a decision you need to make today. And then expanding on the buildings, you know, creating a concession area with a shaded area next to it, and then putting the, the cover at that main entry, so that you have that shelter in place kind of feature there. And expanding all the decks, so you have more room to put seating and so forth. And then as part of this, we got into a discussion about, well, if we put all this parking on the north side of the plan and out there, does an entry off the other side of the plan really start to make sense? Because we're, we're starting to ask people to walk all the way around, come up, and go in on the side. So we are looking at the potential of, maybe we put a, another small structure back up at the north side of the plan that would allow for the entry to be there. And, you know, and I think that's an operational decision that could be discussed, continuously discussed to the day that you decide to pull the trigger on the project and design it. So that's where we are. I'll just flip it up a question, and do you guys have anything to add?
No, I just want to, back to what you were saying, that we, I feel like we got really good participation in the first community engagement meeting we had in person. I think we only had one non-resident that came to the meeting, so it was all built for residents, so I thought that was kind of comfortable. And then again, I think the survey results, our survey results were really impactful, because you guys were very happy with the response rate. And then, you know, staff also, we also made suggestions as we looked at this iteration. I like this iteration, I like the fact that it does use the existing pool that we have. It changed it to more recreational swimming space. And then, honestly, the splash pad, you know, we do keep it open after, when the pool closes, when the school starts, we keep it open during the week, and we always not use that opening. One thing that he said, that, you know, splash pads work really, really well when there's attraction, or there's amenities around there, like up to plenty of premises, you know, something like that, the deep water premises are working on. But as a scale alone, people aren't necessarily going to come to the splash pad just for that. So I think that was a good point to make. So I think the top pad and top pool would be really important, and I think it's really valued. That's why you're blocking a lot of spaces. There's so many play features in our free entry area, it makes them almost unusable as the zero entry. So I like the fact that it's open now, and it still has some options and things, but I really like this iteration, and it makes a lot of sense, so that's, that's what he says.
What time is the next community engagement meeting and location?
Tomorrow night.
I heard tomorrow. Time and location?
Six or seven.
It wasn't really for me, it's for everyone.
We just, yeah, I think it reminded people, I think it reminded people to come to that.
Are you doing another pool membership, or no, on this one? Because I know the previous meeting, you like raffled, not raffled, but like did a drawing. Okay.
Just come and see this iteration and give input on this. And, you know, we hope certainly a lot of people have investment in this, so if I'm in that way, you can learn it at the cost.
Steve, you mentioned the, like, community rental party room type situation, so that's, that's not in this iteration?
That's, that's not in this iteration. I think we actually stepped away from it, but we decided that, if you see the shade structure that's up near the dive well, that that could fulfill that need, if that's something we wanted to do. They talked about ripping it during specific times, and locking down the top pool and that sort of thing, so.
Yeah, that's basically what we found, you know, is anybody who knows who's ever been to a local party at the aquatic center, you know, they're highly sought after. So I have had a lot of people ask us about daytime pool parties. So we thought perhaps if we did a shade structure that's reasonable, then you can also have a daytime pool party with the evening pool parties, because daytime, evening party, pool parties are part of the little ones.
Yeah.
Because they're from seven o'clock. So that might work for both of those things. So there's several things that we're talking about operationally that make a lot of sense.
And, go ahead.
Well, I'm saying, on our internal team, but like, the sand volleyball court and the playground over there, is there a reason we're so focused on protecting that? Does it get a lot of use or parking, or, I see, I feel, feel like it's a natural tendency to it, and there's like four courts there.
There's four sand volleyball courts.
Plus the, plus that bump down the bottom.
That's part of that.
That's, that's, that's important.
There's three courts, we need four courts.
Stop it.
We have, we have, and see, I mean, that was a project that was implemented previously. We have put a decent amount of money in those sand volleyball courts. The playground, it is aging, it is an O E N R, I do have to look into that, I don't know what the specifics are, Justin, we have to look into that, but that was O E N R funded at the time, I believe that was in it, it ages really nice, so we have to look into that.
Yeah.
In terms of how it's going to be, or not. So I mean, for now, we were kind of trying to consult such a kind of hands-off areas.
Yeah.
That's not to say that if this council wishes to look at that, that we can, that is a council's issue again.
Yeah. Here, maybe take out one court and the playground, and relocate the playground, and that seems like that's a huge opportunity to.
Definitely also doesn't.
Yeah. Yeah. Here, by the.
And, and I would advise you to look at this, look at this plan, it's just a, it's a, it's an idea.
Yeah.
So if you decide that this is something you want to report with, and opportunities like that come up, then as part of the next, you know, process.
Yeah.
That you would, you know, maybe you, you get challenged at that point to start looking at alternatives, with the mindset that, you know, the key things to focus on, expanding the leisure water, maintaining competitive swimming, parking, you know, if you just keep your focus on the programming, if the site grows, to allow that to maybe be a little different, well then study it at that point in time.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I love what you guys have done here. I've, you know, heard a lot of feedback from the different events you have. My wife went to the one with the, the voting on the different, you know, plans and ideas and stuff, so it sounds like it's been really great, and what I, you know, seeing that, certainly it's, it's a great.
So I took a picture of this, Linda knows. I just sent it out to all my kids, because half my family's working there at the pool for the last week.
I think it is.
Love the idea. My kids have been lifeguards, they work at the front desk, they know all that. Natalie, they get, they think, because she was manager. You can put lights in the new section, because as a lifeguard, it's very hard at dusk to see the kids, and see the bottom of the pool, and see where they're at. It would also expand the park.
This situation, if that was the case.
I know it would be hard in the stainless steel portion, that's the rec part, unless it could, but I know that's always a, a area of concern for my kids when they're at the last. They love the idea that they're going to take advantage of the old pool that's there, and maybe expand it to northward. The parking, taking out some trees.
We, we are.
Park says about that, because there is, there are two patient pools you can use, so, and you may have to cut that off a little bit, but I.
I like the idea, you're expanding the parking by a quarter double, so what's there before?
It is. Again, picking my kids up before they get drive there, I end up, parking is an issue there, especially when it comes to, you know, our swing team, what is the growing team?
130.
Oh, I remember when we first started, and you had, you know.
45.
Yeah. And so it's unbelievable what's happened because of we do this. It will get used.
Yeah.
I have a question on the option one, the expanded pool, is that, is that on that side?
We would probably, yes. So we would, the, the family restrooms, we would want to spread those out. So there's nothing like being on this side of the pool and having to run all the way over there with your little, with your little one. So we would incorporate at least probably two family restrooms into that building. And, you know, as well as into the other side, as we expanded on to the, you know, the existing locker room itself.
So what's one and two, what's the difference between here, one and two?
One, one has, if you look at the north side of the plan.
Yeah.
There's, there's not a building up there. So if you look at.
The second entry.
Yeah, the second.
Thank you, yeah. Attention detail, man.
I, I think, you know, we, we need to have, I, I don't know if that will ever be resolved until the plan becomes a reality.
Sure.
Because it's an operational thing, and you don't want to have two entrances, but you want to have the opportunity for two entrances, and I, I think that just, that takes a lot of discussion.
Yeah. Or if you have a season pass holder on the entrance, like, that's much easier to staff, like, yeah, yeah, I got a pass, I got a pass, like, go on through them.
During our parks and rec meeting, we talked about having an exit, you know, so at the end of the day, at least you can get your car faster by having an exit.
Yeah.
Or a season pass that doesn't require, demand that entrance.
The other way to look at that is, it doesn't even have to be a structure. It could be a swing gate that, say on July 4th, but that's a big day, and you want to put, I'm not trying to suggest, but if you want to put entrances in both locations, then you can do it on that day, and then shut it down another day. I like the idea of it being an exit.
Yeah, she's on.
Yeah, that's, that's a great idea, too.
Yeah.
Now, the construction of the pool, this, like, you know, obviously it wouldn't be done during summer for construction to happen. Would the pool be basically, would it be shut down for a summer, or?
No. So, we build projects like this, and it's aggressive, so don't, don't get me wrong, and it's like, you're, you're asking for, you know, good weather, and for things to go fairly well. But we build pools like this in the off-season, all the time. So off-season being, probably shut down a little earlier in August than you normally do, mid-August, so then they can get in there and start doing demolition work and everything, and then get through it. So it's done by, around the beginning of May, so they can start working with the health department, and getting the licenses and the approvals all in place to open up on Memorial Day weekend. I think this is, this is clearly achievable underneath that scenario.
Have you looked at the G T E C report from the original one? Because it is not good soil.
It's not good soil. That's not going to slow things down necessarily, it's just something we'll have to deal with, but that's good enough.
You know, that was an issue when they built this, when they built this one.
Yeah.
When he swung, had issues when they started digging, soils were very poor.
Okay. That's good, that's good enough, that's very good enough, thank you.
And I think one thing I just want to add, and I know he just had a feedback, because I'm looking at my iteration, and I'm right now, because I know exactly, and he's like, we need to let the process play out, and I think that's, that's a good point. We made a lot of wholesale changes, but we'll still be talking to the council and the staff, and so this is definitely not the final plan. So just to make sure that.
I thought the feedback on the levy thing was really interesting, and, something that we've talked about, even with my neighbors, like, hey, how do you pay for this thing? It's like, hey, send to the voters, if you want a new pool, phone me up. But then we figure out how to, you know, prioritize the people who are paying for it, certainly is, we hear a lot of that feedback, too, so that was interesting, that, that feedback.
And I would tell you that every single one of your neighbors that are bordering you are dealing with this exact same issue. So we've been, we worked with the city of Dublin, we just finished a new pool for them about a year ago. Yeah, and they scraped a pool and rebuilt it back in its north place. Marysville is definitely on the need for this. They're, you know, their existing pool is held together with, with duct tape right now. And they're trying to figure out how they can get around and pay for it and everything. So there's a lot of movement in this, in this recreation category, in this sort of sector of Columbus. And it's, and it's, frankly, it's all over, because you, you know, I don't know if you've seen one of these, it's going, they've got a levy out there now that's pretty contentious. And then the city of Columbus is looking at building an indoor aquatic facility, so where they. They will have a leisure pool, probably a little larger than what you're seeing here, as well as a fifty-meter competition pool with a movable ball pad, that's going on the east side of Columbus. So there's, there's a lot of movement in this category. You know, water is a, is an amenity that, you know, most communities do want. It's just, how do you, how do you pay for it?
No, sure. Kind of the size of the pool, obviously, 2012 or whatever the planning process for the pool went in place, Plain City was a lot smaller size. Obviously now, with, you know, what we know is coming, or almost double, maybe the size, you know, I don't want to get everything done, and by the time it gets built down, also then we have residents that are, you go, hey, we just keep this brand-new pool, and it's too small.
So the beauty about this option here is, we're taking your existing pool, your existing body of water, and raising the floor in it, right? We're probably giving you more water than what you would actually need if we went and started looking at what's your existing bater loads and everything. The, the competition pool and the dive well, you really don't factor those into the equation, because those pieces are specific to their use. So the people that use, it's kind of an additive feature. So those people that use those are, are very unique in terms of their usage, if that makes sense. So your, your bater load is really, you need to make sure you serve it through your leisure water, and then you get added capacity by, with the, with the lap pool and the dive well, but you need to just understand that that's not really what's serving the community at the end of the day, but you have that added water there.
What's our current pool water?
It's on.
It's on, yeah.
Yeah, it's on this plan. It's on, if somebody can turn around. We have it as square footage, it's on. Yeah, sorry, guys. There it is. Stand on lower corner.
Seven thousand, yeah, forty-six. So these options basically double that?
Yeah.
I, I think, in addition on that also, although the lighting pool is very, for very specific reasons, it's a lot of it, if it was potential only, and at times we open it up for, you know, parents and toddlers, one of the times you can do aerobics, water aerobics, you can do a lot of things with a lap lane pool, aside from your swim team swimming laps.
Swim lessons, yeah. Dedicated swim lessons during the, you know.
Yeah, for sure. I mean, and that's what I think this iteration does, like, for the title of swim lessons, it doesn't go out for that, so you have more segmentation, so you can increase your swimming odds, and capability, assuming that you hire enough staff to.
That was, that was in the wrong question that I asked. You have to hire your staff, or else you do this.
Um, not, not double staff, um, it definitely would require more staff, and that's something is, we look at these iterations, that was mine, I always go towards operations, we talk about second entrance, or, you know, the pool space, or, you know, lazy river, I think you said that there was a local, so probably just getting rid of the lazy river, because they couldn't staff it. So, you know, as we look at that, then that goes back to what we're paying our staff, and looking at pay rates and everything, that all comes into play. So there are multiple considerations for sure.
Any other questions? Thank you very much for your time, and good luck with the community meeting tomorrow.
You also come to this, right?
All right, our next topic of discussion, which coincides with a lot of our visitors that are here in the audience this evening, is the L S V golf carts and speed limits. Sergeant Crather reached out to me, I believe Friday, hadn't, or Thursday or Friday, hadn't got a chance to talk it over with Chief, but he had included you on an email of the topic, but just a lot of concern, and of the speed limit around the Darby Fields entrance, which I said, let's get it on as a discussion item for this evening's meeting. I'm, I understand that coming northbound on Chilla Coffee, it is an odd transition in all of our other residential. that coming northbound on Chilla Coffee, it is an odd transition and all of our other residential areas are twenty-five miles per hour. So I'm going to let Chief weigh in a little bit, I might put you on the spot here.
That's fine, you can do it. As Paul can probably confirm this, I mean, in twenty sixteen, when council got presented with this, is because in twenty seventeen, the state was going to make, Ohio was just going to make golf carts legal. So Plain City had a chance at that time to either say no golf carts at all or come up with our own ordinance to regulate where the golf carts were going to go. Unfortunately, at that time, we didn't have that housing development, we didn't have the ones on one sixty-one, I mean, there was only a few housing developments at that time. And Plain City is kind of unique because we have a state route, a U S route running right through town, which golf carts can't be on anyhow. And a lot of streets were already thirty-five mile an hour as, you know, and at that time, I think Plain City, Georgeville was actually fifty through that area. And so then that was reduced to thirty-five through there. So there, there were some challenges then, so council came up with the current ordinance that we have right now. I also know that there's some issues with, you know, you're, you're permitted to go over forty-two and one sixty-one, you're not allowed to have the golf carts on those streets. And another issue we have here is that Western Avenue crossing over forty-two to Perry Pike, Perry Pike turns at thirty-five mile an hour, so you can't ride the golf cart on there. And I think the one thing that Sergeant Prather was getting at was that we had received a few complaints about people riding the golf carts. You know, they were driving them to different restaurants and stuff like that in town, you know, we don't really want to pull a golf cart over, but once we get started getting complaints, then we have to, you know, and I think that's why we kind of started reminding people, hey, this is what the ordinance is. So far, so with that. You know, the Plain City, Georgeville Road is kind of unique because that turns from South Chillicothe to Plain City, Georgeville Road. Which we all know the Plain City, Georgeville Road can be dangerous in spots, I'm not saying that that is an area that's dangerous right there, but we have, you know, somebody mentioned bicycles earlier, we have had a few bicycles hit right there. You know, but I, as far as changing the speed limit, I don't know, you know, that's, that's the thing that council would have to decide, and also I don't know, it's kind of different because that's like, you know, like one sixty-one and state route forty-two is, you know, Main Street and Jefferson Avenue, which we can't, we don't, council has no say-so on that because ODOT owns those streets. So I don't know when it comes to Plain City, Georgeville Road, how that works with the county having that, you know, that road. Because it's our jurisdiction, but it still goes from South Chillicothe Street to Plain City, Georgeville Road in that area.
What is the specific divocation for that? Is it right at the intersection? Where it changes from South Chillicothe to Plain City, Georgeville?
Change right past the school, it goes into Plain City, Georgeville Road.
Got it, okay.
So, and I, again, I'm not, I guess, changing the speed limit, I just don't know how that works. I don't know if there has to be a study for that or the council just says, hey, let's change the speed limit. Because we had the same issue on North Chillicothe Street at one time, council changed North Chillicothe Street all the way from the bypass to downtown to twenty-five mile an hour. A lot of people complained about that, then we changed it back to thirty-five mile an hour up to, I think, the park.
Now you got a housing development going in across the street, so duh, does that change it back to twenty-five mile an hour?
I mean, so there's some things that we have to look at with that. You know, I, I, you know, the golf cart thing, I have a golf cart, I feel for it, I know how it is, I mean, but, you know, we have to go by what the current ordinance is.
It is unique to the northbound, southbound, you know, the same area where the speed limit.
That might be.
See, that's kind of one of the unique things I've seen, I mean, traveling around with my business and.
But forty-two is the same way right here, when it changes into fifteen, it was at the thirty-five the opposite way, so. You know, again, we didn't have the growth that we have now back in twenty seventeen. And again, things have changed a lot, so, you know, Derek, did you hear something? Are we annexed on the other side of the road? So that's why. It is a county road on that side. You know, and, and we're annexed to the normal road, so we control the one side, we do not control the other.
When our annex to the, well, you have the park, or the.
We annex all of that.
Not all the way up yet, but we have that little chunk on the other side.
We have both sides. We have both sides of the road, just by enforced traffic on those other roads.
Isn't that like, so we have where Smucker Park is, but isn't that other parcel annexed, or it's already annexed in? So we do.
Be on both sides.
You can control, we should be able to control until the annexation.
Should, technically, I mean, I, I think we run something by, you know, Mr. Doon. They're probably going, they're probably going to reduce that speed anyway, because when they go to put that roundabout in, they're going to reduce that speed through that eight, down to twenty. I think. Somewhere south.
Well, we know the intersection is, we know the intersection is dangerous, but.
There's going to be roundabout putting in there, reduce that speed coming into there anyway, so.
So just, again, my concern would be the safety of just that road is, gets busy at times, and so my concern would be the safety and, you know, if we do decide to do that, then I think there should be signs that posted like golf carts or whatever they do, I mean, in that area.
Well, I, I mean, as we talked about the speed limit, you know, something new is, you know, the village you own, property on the other side, that's going to be parkland, I don't know if there'd be other tie or crossing to get to that from Darby Fields to get over to that area, so. You're talking about a crosswalk. That's a street and crossing.
Yeah.
I mean, I would like that to be a twenty-five zone to get to the park instead of a, a thirty-five zone.
Oh, you're talking about North Chillicothe?
No, sound, so like it.
The new park, this new park.
Oh, you're talking about.
Same as this path, right?
If you go straight across all of them.
This one, yeah, get to Smucker Park.
Ideally, you'd let the lower through there.
Yeah.
When does the roundabout go through?
Twenty twenty-six is what they're projecting, so.
Yeah.
Which is still too long away.
So, so.
It is, I mean, they put one, one on, let's see, one sixty-one up like overnight, so.
Add question, whether or not.
Yeah.
So was this one, this one's partly, right?
No, this is designed.
Since had a question.
County money.
Right, hang on, Mr. Since was starting to make a question, statement.
Add question. Speed limit on the other side to make it consistent with the southbound lane, needs to be consistent with the northbound lane, and we just have to find that if we're able to do that and then go through the process.
And then maybe something that just council has to vote on.
What?
Then maybe it's just something that council has to vote on.
Yeah.
We need to bear, we need to bear.
Yeah. Yep, yep, I mean, we've got it, we've got, we've got research to do, we've got some homework, but.
What is in the village versus, where's the village line versus the county court line?
Yeah, that's ours, the only thing that's not ours is the, the, both lanes are ours, but the cemetery is not in the village, but it's the road.
But it's already twenty-five miles per hour.
Yeah, all the road is. Because we enforce that, I mean, it should be incorporated into your county park.
Then the process, I think then it's a simple process.
Okay, then Justin, did you?
Yeah, so that was reached out to both the vast county engineer and ODOT just to make sure, just to make sure they were in communication. I have not heard that as of this evening from our entity. Doing some, we need to research, try to prepare for tonight, current county engineer, knowing that probably a lot of singles, if it's a county road, city and village roads, other than streets and highways, in order to change the speed limit, the city or village would have to conduct an engineering study. So they have to, the current county engineer, just for a little bit of context, but again, we're waiting to hear that from the county engineer and ODOT just to make sure that any teams are cross, I've got it, in case help chooses to proceed. I'm sure there would need to be some formal council authorization, though. Whatever that may look like, whatever the approval is from the county engineer, I'm sure there needs to be some county approval for it.
Because I know North Chillicothe Street may have changed it, but when ODOT turned that over to the village, because it used to be U S forty-two, it basically, it was just a vote on council. Just decided to change the speed limit there from twenty-five to thirty-five and thirty-five, whatever.
So just going back for the golf carts or those speed vehicles, by changing the speed limit to twenty-five, that would alleviate the issues coming out on to one forty-two or.
That would prevent them from leaving the.
Yeah.
The term left, that is, you know, they still won't be able to go right, but they just, they don't care to go right in, I think they want to go left so they can come into town.
Go into town.
Because of some of the restaurants and whatever, you know, the things they come into town for.
And the safety aspect of coming in.
Yeah, I mean, it's, that road's ridiculous. Even at thirty-five, mostly because we see they're not doing thirty-five on that road.
Right, a lot of tickets out there on that road, so. And that's why my main concern is just the traffic going through there, so if we do do something, or do change the speed limit, then again, I'd like to see some posts, signage or something to just say, you know, either there's a crosswalk or golf carts or something there.
Yeah.
Or watch out.
Speed bump right there. Any other question?
I think, I think it makes sense if we can do it, I mean, essentially we're talking about doing a pinch crosswalk there and the safety issue of car sharing left, golf carts sharing left. It should match the other side, I'm, if we can do it, I'm supportive, sure.
Okay, so we will have that on, check in, hopefully have it ready, all the research by the next meeting in October here, okay?
Can I just ask, is that, is that, this is all your concerns, right, it was just that intersection or just that? Okay, we're talking about maybe seventy-five, a hundred feet of roadway. You essentially can imagine what, you know, it's out there.
Moving into unfinished business, second reading resolution forty-nine dash twenty-three four, authorizing implementing the park rules and regulations.
Motion to approve resolution forty-nine twenty-four.
Second. Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Resolution forty-nine twenty-four passes. Second reading resolution fifty twenty-two four, authorizing the sale of impounded vehicles.
Motion to approve resolution fifty twenty-two four.
Yes.
Mr. Sins.
Yes.
Mr. Herrmann.
Yes.
Mr. Lou.
Yes.
Mr. Herrmann.
Yes.
Yes.
Resolution fifty twenty-four passes. New business, first reading resolution fifty-one dash twenty-two four, amending the Village of Plain City Employee Policies and Procedures Handbook. And that concludes our public portion of our meeting, we are about to go into executive session pursuant to Ohio revised code, section one twenty-one dot two-two G eight to consider confidential information related to an applicant or, for economic development assistance. Is there a motion to go into?
To executive session, revised code section one two-one dot two-two G eight.
Yes.
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 Yes.